Specifically on January 15th, 2025. Proper notice was sent to the Courier-News and the Star-Ledger and filed with the clerk at the attachment of Bridgewater and posted on the municipal bulletin board. Please be aware of the zoning board of adjustment policy for public hearings. No new applications will be heard after 9:30 p.m. and no new testimony will be taken after 10 p.m. If you're able, please rise for the salute to the flag.
(inaudible) And for the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi there, Maria. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Fuze.
Here.
Mr. White-Daly.
Ah, here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Mrs. Amin.
Yes.
Mr. Banjono.
Here.
Mr. Gajasky is not here? Okay. Mr. Fresco?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Seacat is absent for the record and Mr. Vesio is also absent for the record. Mr. Kulak?
Here.
And Mr. Gabbit?
Here.
Um, Mr. Aller, Board Attorney?
Here.
Mr. Burr, Board Engineer?
Here.
Ms. Samad, Board Planner?
Here.
And Mr. Rashad, Board Traffic Engineer?
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to open up the meeting to any members of the public that would like to speak on any land use issue which is not on our agenda this evening. You can come forward. Okay, seeing none, we're going to close that portion. Uh, we have two sets of minutes to adopt tonight. Let's do June 24th, 2025 first, please. Any comments or changes? June 24th, Mrs. Amin.
I have some comments that are in the transcript that is attached to the minutes.
Okay.
And they're minor comments, so I can give those to Maria and then she intends to be transcribed.
Great.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I reviewed those. They are, you know, fairly minor in nature and I think we could just give them to the Board Secretary and include those amended, right, as the board minutes.
Okay, because they are transcript and we want to make sure that we protect the integrity of that.
So would the changes I move that we?
All right, that's Mr. White-Daly. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Or Mr. Fresco, thank you.
Mr. White-Daly?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mrs. Amin?
Yes.
Mr. Fresco?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mr. Kulak?
Yes.
Mr. Vesio? Oh, I'm sorry, he's absent. So that would be Mr. Gabbit?
Yes.
And Chairman Fuze?
Yes. All right, next up, we have July 8th, 2025 minutes, which are again a transcript.
Okay, I have, you know, from this one, uh, there was eight or nine pages on this there are comments.
Okay.
The transcript.
So similarly, minor modifications as amended could be moved.
All right. With that, any other changes? I have a motion, please.
I move with the change.
All right, Mr. White-Daly, do it. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Fresco, thank you.
Mr. White-Daly?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mrs. Amin?
Yes.
Mr. Fresco?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mr. Kulak?
Yes.
Mr. Vesio? Oh, I'm sorry, he's absent. So that would be Mr. Gabbit?
Yes.
And Chairman Fuze?
Yes. All right, next up, we have July 8th, 2025 minutes, which are again a transcript.
Okay, I have, you know, from this one, uh, probably almost eight or nine pages on this there are comments.
Okay.
On the transcript.
So similarly, minor modifications as amended could be moved.
All right. With that, any other changes? I have a motion, please.
I move with the change.
All right, Mr. White-Daly, do it. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Fresco, thank you.
Mr. White-Daly?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mrs. Amin?
Yes.
Mr. Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Seacat?
I'm sorry, Mr. Kulak?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbit?
Yes.
And Chairman Fuze?
Yes. All right, next up, we have no resolutions, right, Rich?
Correct.
All right, so let's go to the applications and, uh, Mr. Coakley, good evening. We have 821 and then JCC. Mr. Cohen as well.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kevin Coakley, on behalf of 821 Bridgewater, the co-applicant along with, uh, the Jewish Community Centers of Somerset Hundred and Warren Counties and represented separately by Mr. Howard Cohen, and with me is my colleague, Herschel Rose, uh, this evening. So, um, we were last here in, uh, in May. Since that time, um, we've made one significant change in the plans, which will be testified to tonight, and that is to, uh, add 13 affordable units to the, to the project and...
Mr. Coakley, I'm very, very sorry. I just want to put on the record, just for housekeeping, we did attempt, the board, Mr. Aller and Maria and some of the board professionals, we did attempt a special meeting for you because we were having trouble with the, um, the time element of this case. Unfortunately, Mr. Cohen wasn't available. I appreciate him trying to make the effort, but I just want the record to reflect that this board did try and schedule a special meeting for July 15th, and thank you to everybody involved for trying to get that together. Again, I apologize for the interruption.
Okay. Uh, yes, I, I acknowledge that was true.
Thank you.
So, um, uh, on July, uh, 25th, we submitted, uh, a revised, uh, site plan to the board, which shows the 13 affordable units and maintaining the 51 market units for a total of 64 units, which, if you recall correctly, was the number of units that we started this application with, which was 64, and, uh, so it's still at, at 64. And, uh, uh, Mr. Moschello is here this evening. He's the project engineer. He, he actually started the application with his testimony last August, and, uh, he's here this evening to, uh, to testify about a number of things, including the, uh, the new site plan and including the, uh, emergency access, uh, program. So, um, uh, we look forward to, uh, moving his testimony forward. Uh, let me just say a few things, a few other things before we, we go forward, and that one is that, um, in this case now, obviously involves affordable housing, it involves an age-restricted complex, and so these, these affordable units will be age-restricted affordable units. So when the legislature passed the law in 2024 with respect to, um, affordable housing, uh, they added a, an important provision, somewhat unusual, but I'd just like to call that to your, your attention, so you have it, keep that in mind while you're, uh, listening to the testimony. And that is paragraph Q of section two of the law, where the legislature found that the population of persons aged 65 years and older in the state has grown approximately 13, from 13% in 1990 to 17% in 2021, and that such growth in conjunction with expected future growth makes it appropriate for the legislature to allow up to 30% of the units towards a municipality's prospective affordable housing obligation to be satisfied through the creation of age-restricted units. So, um, that's a, a significant provision, both with respect to the finding, I mean, if you do the rough math, that's a 30% increase in, in, uh, people over 65 during that, that 30-year period. And then, secondly, for them to say a municipality can satisfy its fourth round affordable housing obligation by, by having as much as 30% of that, um, be devoted to, uh, age-restricted housing for, uh, seniors. So that's, that's one point I'd like to make.
Mr. Coakley, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you. This is Mr. Kulak here. So you're saying that as you read from the law, the age restriction on the community allows for 30% of the market rate units to be counted, or am I misunderstanding what you're saying?
Yeah, I think you're misunderstanding a little bit. Bridgewater has an obligation for the fourth round of about 441 units.
Hmm.
So, uh, 30% of that obligation is approximately 125 units.
Yes.
So as much, so, I mean, in this project, as proposed, there's 13 affordable units, so it's only 13 of, of a, of a, an obligation of 400 and something, but you can, you can get credit for these, these units in the affordable housing, uh, approval process. Up to 30%. In other words, you could have up to 30% of the, of the units be age-restricted affordable units.
So as it applies to this specific application, you have a proposal to incorporate another, or I should say, 13 affordable units?
Yes.
Which are adding to the 51 market rate units for a total of 64. Those 13 would be counted toward Bridgewater's, um, affordable housing requirements, and I'm still missing the point here on the 30%, so please help me.
There's a, there's, the, the legislature said as much as 30% of your obligation could be in the form of age-restricted affordable units.
I see.
Now, the total amount for the town?
Yeah, of the town, of the town's total obligation, which is in the 440.
100 and...
So 30% of 421.
Right.
Which would be 100 and...
Okay.
We're not anywhere near here, there tonight, we're just, but it's a, it's a drop in the bucket.
I understand. I just wanted to add some clarity to it. The other question I had for you is originally, you had proposed to this board that you would be paying a cash sum in lieu of building affordable units. Can you tell us why you changed your strategy there?
Um, the, you know, at the last hearing, uh, I heard very strongly from the board that that was not a desirable, uh, proposal.
Is that something that is no longer permitted under the new legislation?
No, I believe it's, I believe it's permitted for the, for the municipality to collect subsidies from developers, um, and that's what, how that would work, uh, but we're not proposing that now.
Right. So you changed your approach and you're incorporating the 13 affordable units into your proposal?
Correct.
Yes. And Mr. Aller, is that your understanding as well, that the 13 units that were proposed, um, as opposed to the cash donation? I, I was under the impression that the cash donation was no longer acceptable under the new legislation. Well, you, you...
I understand that township is that the, the township has a third-round settlement that requires the affordable units to be built on-site.
Hmm.
And under your ordinance, um, you can require up to 20% if the units are for sale, 20% of the units to be affordable, or 15% of the units if they are rental units.
Okay. But they must be built as opposed to the cash contribution?
On-site.
Right.
Yeah, we, in fairness, I think we had an agreement, a disagreement about what the fourth round allows.
Hmm.
The fourth round, which is the 20, 2025, 2035 round of affordable housing.
Yes.
And we, we, we think, uh, that, that it's allowable to do a subsidy, but that said, we're not doing a subsidy.
Understood. Thank you.
I have a question, just, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No.
Um, do you know how much, if you had decided not to put in the affordable housing, how much you would have had to pay to sort of buy them off?
That would, that would be up to the governing body.
Okay.
I'm sure they, they would try to do it reasonably, et cetera, and be, and cognizant of the economic value of the subsidy, but that's their deci, that would be their decision ultimately.
And, um, do we know what that amount would have been?
No, I don't know.
But there's been substantial debate if that's even allowed, and, you know, Darlene, I know I've talked to you about it.
Yes, Darlene and I have spoken about it. I have my own opinions on it, and, and as Mr. Aller had mentioned, um, there, we do have an ordinance that was effectuated as part of the third-round settlement that does require a set, a physical set aside of the units. The amount in the ordinance for units outside of that from previous years about payment in lieu leaves it to the discretion of the council, um, although the COA regulations do require that it should be established by ordinance. So the idea of this payment in lieu kind of doesn't work across the board because of the insufficiencies there, um, and regardless of that, regardless of the payment in lieu m- model here, we have an ordinance that requires the units to be in place.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sorry.
Okay. All right, um, so the, the second kind of general point, and it all relates to the, to the same thing, and that is that the township is, uh, engaging in creating or has, has created a plan called the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, and it has filed that, um, as of the end of June, and it's, it's their proposal as to how they would satisfy the, the fourth round obligations. So in looking at that plan, what, what struck my attention was, you know, this is a comparison that we're making here. We're, we're telling the, the board and the residents that this is a modest project. Um, it's, it's a density of five units per acre, a little bit over five units per acre. But in the, in the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, the, um, um, plan reported that what the developers were proposing to the municipality in terms of, of, uh, density, and I have, I have the, you know, several pages marked, I'll, I'll, I'll hand them out to you, um, but in, in general, the, uh, there were nine proposals, and of the nine proposals, uh, seven were over 10 units per acre density, and most of those were 20 units per acre density, or 16 or 18, very large numbers. Now, I'm not saying that the township is pursuing these proposals, but I am saying that this is, these are the proposals that developers who are going to do affordable inclusionary projects were, were proposing, and it's in black and white in the plan, as compared to this proposal, which is, you know, a little bit over five, five units per acre. So if, if you want, if it's, uh, okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hand out those few pages from the report.
Sure. Why don't we, Kevin, why don't we mark that as a eight?
Eight.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, with, with that, unless you have any more questions?
Uh, I just, Mr. Coakley, I want to just do something for clarification from when Mr. Kulak was talking. I believe it's Mr. Kulak used the word, when we talk about the 13 units for, um, the affordable housing, he used the word replace units. It's an additional units, I believe, you're adding in.
Well, it depends...
You're adding in to what we talked about at the last meeting, you're adding in more. The word replace was used, we're not replacing, we're adding in those 13 units.
Well, I mean, the, the sequence was, uh, Mr. White-Daly was, it was 64 units to start. It was reduced to 60 units at some point. It was then, a plan was submitted showing 52 units.
All right, so the last meeting, we were at 52, let's use that. You, you're not replacing, you're adding in 13 additional from our last meeting.
We're adding back, yeah, 13 units.
Right, I want that clarified based on what's Mr. Kulak, when he's gotten clarification on the 30%.
So up, up to 64 again.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just real quick, so you're, you're showing that these are part of the affordable housing plan that's being submitted to the state, that developers have until the end of this month to challenge? Challenge. So by August 31st, if there's no challenge, this kind of becomes the de facto plan for Bridgewater Township to achieve our fourth-round goal of 421 units.
Yes, it's been adopted, it's adopted master plan, and so, uh, whether or not it's challenged, it is active right now.
Okay.
Um, and the challenge period will be resolved by the end of December if there are any challenges.
Gotcha. But we, we don't know any other details about this, what the site i- is like, the slopes, the surrounding traffic, you know, this is just basically, you're saying, you're trying to compare units per acre of this project versus what's proposed in our fourth-round settlement.
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Clarify as well, so the board is aware, there are other kind of nuances to some of those projects that have been included in the housing element, in that they have set asides of 25 to 28%. They have off-site additional units that they added, they have bonus credits that they've been eligible for, so, um, just so the board is aware, there are other nuances to some of those sites rather than just the density per acre.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think it's also fair to say, maybe you correct me if I'm wrong, is that the, the town has not, uh, uh, passed the 30% allowable use of, uh, age-restricted affordable.
Catherine, would it be fair to say that the fourth round in each town, including Bridgewater, you know, it's designed to be more challenging, it's designed to create higher-density projects, because in the first through third rounds, essentially, the, the low-hanging fruit was already built, so, you know, essentially that we would have to go up in, in units per acre?
In some cases, yes. Um, I think Bridgewater has been very proactive, um, in addressing its obligation, and the remaining, the remaining obligation we have here in the fourth round was not as high. So we were fortunate in that we, I mean, they're still, they're still, I, I guess you'd say, higher-density projects, but they're also located on previously disturbed sites in some cases, they're located in commercial areas along Route 22.
Right.
Um, so, you know, I think it's, it's a tough comparison to say that this, uh, the sites that were chosen in this, in this, um, for the plan to satis, to satisfy the obligation are comparable to, to this application, um, just even, even on just a density-to-density basis, based on the context of those sites, how they already exist today, maybe they're, some of them are in three- or four-story office buildings already on Route 22, so, um, the others, I think there's some differences. So it's hard, hard for me as a planner to look at just, just the straight density calculation.
Gotcha.
I think that's a, a really valid point, and so therefore, the only point of comparison that Mr. Coakley is making is the density per acre, and then without considering all of the other mitigating factors or contributory factors that may make those sites better than, worse than, same as, and so on. Is that fair, Mr. Coakley, or not?
That's a fair, a fair statement, but density, as the law reflects, and that's the, the Fair Housing Act, is one of the principal components of the method by which a, a board or a municipality creates affordable housing. Density variances?
Hmm.
Or density bonuses?
Right.
High-density.
And, but it's not the only way? It's just one way?
Not the only way, but if it, without that, you don't have a, you don't get affordable housing without density variances.
Well, I won't make such a blanket statement, but I think we agree in principle that you're saying it can be a tool that the township can use to achieve its housing goals, and in fact, in some cases, it's the only tool they have available, which may or may not be the case in this case.
Every case is different, I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Moschello, you want to?
Yeah, Mr. Fresco.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I feel like, I feel like this was, was thrown on us. So can, can we talk about this for a second? Specifically, the one at 55 Corporate Drive, which I, I think is relevant, um, correct me if I'm wrong, that is on Roots 202, 206. So the modified request, I'm, I'm, I'm reading the second bullet, the modified request was not accompanied with any information on high buildings or net density. So does that mean that this particular one is the only one on this list that was not, density was not provided?
I think density was provided as to every other one.
Okay, so this is one that is on the same corridor as this applicant is requesting us to review, and there is no density on this one, even though it's just a few miles away. I just want to make sure I understand that.
So just to clarify, this list, as required by law, every housing element in Fair Share Plan on any municipality is required to list every property owner that showed interest. This list doesn't, is not, not all of these sites were included in the township's third round, fourth round housing element. These were just interested developers. So make it very, very clear that the site you just identified was not included in the township's housing element Fair Share Plan.
Okay, but it was presented by the applicant to show density?
Yes.
Correct, by his, his addition.
Density that the town...
And this one that is only a few miles from this case does not have density, that's all.
You know, I, can I correct myself?
Please, yeah.
And that is, it does appear that in the one, two, through fourth bullet point, it says, "and resulted in a net density of 41 plus or minus units per acre."
Okay.
And, and just to be clear, these are, these were proposals, not before a board, they were proposals as permitted by the law to, during the period where the township was preparing its housing element, to consider. These are all proposals that the township had to consider. So these, these density comparisons, just so you know, are not comparisons to what the township has accepted in other places, because that, some of these sites are not in the housing element. They are not sites that have been considered for rezoning according to the housing element. They have been considered, but rejected ultimately.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. Um, so this is in the Sanofi site, which is up the road in a four-story building, so that's, that's probably why the density, but thank you for clarifying that. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Moschello?
Yeah?
Rob, would you raise your right hand, please? You solemnly swear that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. And Rob, just for the record, would you state your name, please?
For the record, it's Robert Moschello, M-O-S-C-H-E-L-L-O, and my business address is 265 Main Street, Gladstone, New Jersey.
Thank you.
All right, so I believe we're up to, is A9 the next one in?
A9.
A9 will be next.
All right, so you were previously sworn, correct?
Yes.
And you, you previously were qualified as an expert in the field of civil engineering?
Yes.
Does he continue to be qualified, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
So for the record this evening, this is the first exhibit I want to enter, it's going to be A9. For the record, it's actually, this exhibit itself is actually dated November 12th, 2024, but I'll mark today's date for when it was entered into the record, and it's entitled, "Emergency Access Exhibit." So I want to start off this evening, before we talk about the project and the modifications that were made to the project for the affordable housing component, I want to go back a little bit first and talk about the emergency access. This was mentioned in some previous testimony about the project and how it was going to be tied into the JCC property, so just to reorient everyone, Route 202, 206 is on the right side of the plan, you know, running in a north-south direction. The JCC property is on the left side or the western side of the plan, um, shown here, and then, as we talked about early on in this application, there was going to be a three-acre subdivision, if you will, to create a three-acre lot that would ultimately, um, be utilized by the JCC, which is shown here on the plan outlined in yellow with this red line that creates the subdivision of those three acres. And on that lot would remain, for now, the existing residential, residential structure, um, and, and gravel parking areas and so forth, um, ultimately to be utilized by its future owner, the, the JCC. But one of the things that was talked about was, um, emergency access between these two properties and how that would be effectuated. And so what we've shown on this plan here is essentially an emergency access connection on the southern portion of the property, I'll say the southwest corner of the property, that connects from the back corner of Road A of our development and travels in a southerly portion and then a westerly direction to where it connects with the existing driveway of the JCC development. This emergency access would be, um, made out of stabilized turf material, um, we've used that before in town for other emergency access drives, um, it would be 15-foot in width, and it would be controlled by a series of, I'll say, bollards with a chain that goes across it that would have a Knox box attached to it to allow emergency services personnel to open the gate if need be in an emergency. So for example, if the entrance off of 202, 206 becomes closed for whatever reason, and the residences cannot get out through the use of emergency personnel, these gates can be opened up and they'll be able to utilize the JCC driveway to exit the property out to, uh, the southern road, I forget the exact name of it, is it Talmage?
Talmage.
Talmage, thank you, Talm, Talmini, thank you.
Talmini, you got it.
Thank you. Um, and in the alternate, if something were to happen along the JCC driveway, they would be able to open up those same two emergency access points, and the JCC would be able to utilize the access out to 202, 206 in the event of an emergency. So it's reciprocal in, in both directions. Should the board ultimately a- act favorably upon this, there will be the need for some, excuse me, reciprocal easement agreements and so forth for this to occur, but that's detail that could be worked out later on. Um, so that, that's the, essentially, the emergency access and how it would function on, on the site. It's, it's shaped in this way, because this way, the, instead of coming straight across the property, we shaped it like this so that the area of the property could be fully utilized by the JCC in the future without cutting off a portion of the lower area and take, and restricting their ability to utilize this green space on the property here.
Mr. Moschello, there's an agreement, correct, between the JCC and, and 821?
That is correct.
It's in writing that this would happen.
Yes.
The easements would have to be recorded subsequently, correct?
Correct.
Is that roadway you just described, the emergency access roadway, is that appropriate for emergency vehicles like fire trucks and ambulances, or just for vehicular traffic just to get in and out?
It is designed to handle, I'll call 80,000-pound vehicles, which is your maximum typical emergency service vehicle weights. So it can handle a fire truck, it can handle an ambulance, it could handle police, you know, residential vehicles to get in and out. You don't anticipate using it unless you're in an emergency, so it'll be turfed, and it'll be there for that instance.
I don't have any problem with the turf part. I'm just looking at it, wondering if it's big enough. You're saying it's substantial enough. And, and does that curve interfere with their ability to navigate it?
No, you typically, in this case, it would be, it's 15-foot wide, so you'd have access, basically controlled access in either direction, where you'd have to have some type of control on it to let vehicles come through in the instance of an emergency. It wouldn't just be opened up and left open. You'd have to have-
I'm talking about the design of the roadway, that it's curved.
Yes.
Substantially.
Yes.
I'm asking if that interferes with the ability of a, let's say, a fire truck to navigate it?
No, it will be able to navigate that turn, because the fire trucks can also navigate the site as well. And we checked it to make sure it can get, it could get through that.
And if you're pointing to the site, do you have all 64 units accounted for there?
No, this, this, this layout is an older layout. Don't, don't look at this. So I'm going to put up another exhibit that shows the revised layout in a moment.
Very good.
This plan was done back in November of 2024. So this, this actually represents a 60-unit layout that we were talking about at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this one before? Okay.
Who holds the keys?
Excuse me?
Who holds the keys to the lock?
So since there'll be a Knox box at both locations, we were just discussing this before, the fire department would have a key, the police would have a key, the JCC would have a key, and presumably the HOA would have a key as well. So there'd be technically four keys, so that this way, if there is an emergency, out of those four organizations, they'd be able to open up the gates. Usually in a case like this, the police would usually arrive first, so they would have the ability to open it up.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, the next exhibit I have this evening will entitle this A10 for the record. And this one is dated August 13th, 2024. Hello? August, actually, it's dated, the original date on the plan is August 13th, 2024, site plan rendering, revised through July 21st, 2025. I'll note today's date for the record. And this is the, a print of the plan that we actually submitted to the board. So I, even though I entered it as an exhibit, this was submitted to the board as part of the submission.
We'll mark it.
That we did.
Yeah, we can mark it.
Yeah.
A10.
For the reference, for the record, A10. So this is the site plan rendering of the proposed project. And you'll notice on here, this does not show the emergency access again, because that was shown on a prior exhibit. But for the purpose of this plan, we want to talk about here is the revised layout. So we looked at the, we looked at the number of units, and we looked at the ability to add affordable housing. And what you're looking at here on this plan is essentially the unchanged road network in terms of the access and circulation is, remains as it was before. What we've done is we have now 51 townhouse units on the project, and we have a 13-unit affordable housing building that we've located in, interior to the project site along Road A. This particular building that we show here has the opportunity for off-street parking with, with garages, but depending on the final disposition of the building, some of those may not have garages, some of them might. But this building shows a 13-unit affordable housing building on this portion of the site with access off of Road A. We've also added additional on-street parking as well to the project site to balance that, to balance that out as well. So basically, right now, we have 253 parking spaces on the overall site. Forty-eight of them are surface spaces, spread out along both Road A and Road B, both parallel and pull-in spaces, as well as pull-in spaces on the western side of the site, 48 in total. But 253 overall when you count the two-car garage and driveway combinations on the townhouse units and the driveway and garage combinations on the affordable building. We've also added to this plan an amenity space, which basically right now is, is a large patio area, patio area with seating between the townhouse building and the affordable building to show that we have the ability to support that on, on the site. We also have, there were comments in prior letters about adding connectivity, walkway connectivity around the site. We did that on both the interior of the site with sidewalks and on the exterior as well with sidewalks that go around the project site. We've added additional crosswalks with some, there were some comments about that in one of the traffic engineer's reports as well. And so we, we've enhanced those features on the site plan to this point where we are now with the project layout. And we have not made any further updates to the stormwater management system on the site. We are showing eight stormwater basins right now that are there. We did submit to the board engineer and the board, a soils report that was done back in October of 2024 to show that the site does have infiltration and to also show that groundwater is not a concern for the basins. But ultimately, there'll be some additional calculations and design work that needs to be done to finalize the stormwater system, which we would look to do as part of a site plan application if the board acts favorably upon this application. But that would be addressed later on. This plan does show landscaping, both internal along the loop road, as well as some perimeter landscaping on the site. There's about 180 trees shown on here right now. In the mix of evergreens and deciduous, there's probably additional room for additional enhanced landscaping around the buildings and so forth, which we would certainly look at as part of a, a site plan application.
Just before you go on to the stormwater, the affordable units, 13 affordable units, are these single, single-bedroom units, correct?
They, they can be, they could be either the mix as described by the state, or they could be single-bedroom. They can, they could be either, either one, two, or three-bedroom units.
So Catherine, can they have all single-bedroom affordable units?
Because it is age restricted, they can. They have to, the number of bedrooms has to, at a minimum, match the number of units. So they can't have, if they have a studio, it has to be offset by a two-bedroom. But they could have theoretically all one-bedrooms or all two-bedrooms, or a mix of ones and twos.
In order to squeeze the 13 affordable units into that space, how many stories does that building have to be? And are the units going to be multi-story on one story? Could you describe that a little bit?
Right now, based on the preliminary footprint that we were looking at, it was a two-story building with one story, you know, units being on the first floor and then units being on the, on the second floor of that layout.
More of a condo than a townhouse?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome. In terms of some of the, the zoning numbers here, Mr. Cokely talked about the density for this project now, based on the acreage, the density for this project is 5.6 units per acre for, for the 64 units we show here. The floor area ratio, based on the lot area that's calculated when you take into your hillside development ordinance and the units mix that we have here now, which I believe includes basements, as well as the affordable building that's shown on the plan, the FAR is 0.42 on, on the lot, on the lot, where 0.15 is permitted. And then the lot coverage for this project with the layout we have now with all the walkways, the roads, the driveways, and so forth that we show here with the affordable building and the amenity space that's there now, we're at 48.7%.
Rob, just going off of prior calculations, you had a total disturbance of 10.27 acres at the last time you testified. Where are we at here in terms of acreage that's disturbed?
It's, because we really made the change interior to the roadway, it's, it's about the same. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be much less, because we're still keeping the, the stormwater basins where we show them and the grading behind the units. So it's, it's about the same amount.
I'm having trouble getting to your 5.6 units per acre. I'm at 6.23 on a 10.27 acre disturbance.
It's not based on disturbance, it's based on lot area. So the remaining lot area is 11.91 acres. And then we had to do a slight adjustment to that because of the hillside development ordinance, because a couple, there's some small steep slopes. So it actually works out to be 11, you use 11.467 acres as your, as your overall acreage.
So you're really disturbing over 11 acres here?
Disturbing 10.7, but the site, the, the project site's 11 point, the overall project site's 11.9, and we're disturbing about 10 point, 10.7 of it.
Does your 11.9 include the road entrance coming into?
Yeah, 11.9.
The way to the right.
11.9 includes this, includes the right-of-way dedication here and the, the line along here, and then the, the three-acre subdivision line.
All right. So one of my original meetings, probably going back close to a year ago, whenever this started, was where you had the driveway coming in. How much acreage is that compared to the whole project? And so I was trying to calculate how many you-
This area here?
Yes. I'd ask that back-
Yeah, we, we looked at it. I want to say it was just-
It looks almost the same size as the JCC properties.
Yeah, but it's, it's not quite. That's three acres. This, this would probably be just under two acres, because some of this, we're not disturbing, because it's within, it's within the, the wetland areas. So it's about an acre of non-disturbance there, give or take a little bit.
It's probably about, just under the same size that you're disturbing then. So it'd be just over an acre then.
Yeah, of disturbance there, with the, with the basins in the front here and a little bit of grading on this side over here.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Real quick, then, before I forget. So impermeable surface that's created, I had it at 5.5 acres from your last testimony. Where are we at here?
It's, it's still five, right now, with the current layout, it's 5.581 acres.
And last question, I have the removal of 576 trees.
The tree removal number right now, based on our count, let me one. I have 407 trees to be removed, based on our, based on doing the tree survey and, and doing that calculation.
Just 407?
Yes.
And you had about 250 you think you can get back in there?
We have about 100 and, one second, Mr. Chairman. We have about, there's about 185 shown on the plan right now. And I think once you go through your final site layout, you can, you can go north of 200 on that with the plantings.
Thank you, Rob.
Welcome.
Sorry, Mrs. Mint, go ahead.
I have questions regarding that one building that has the affordable units. Is that like an apartment building? What kind of, is it separate like the other houses are?
It's not so much as an apartment building, as it's more of a, a condo building. So you would have, think of this being cut up into basically, there's 13 units, so it's an odd number. So you're going to have like maybe five on the, you might have six on the second floor and seven on, six on the second, maybe seven on the first, or vice versa to get to the 13. But you'd, you'd have it sliced up this way, and you'd have a door typically where you'd come in and, you come in on, on a lobby, and you'd have a staircase going up to the second level and a door to go to your first unit. There wouldn't be a common hallway in there with, with all condo units off, off of the hallway for a building like this. And, and that's still, this is, this is a preliminary footprint. That could be modified slightly, you know, if, in, in the future. But that's generally what you would have for a, a building of that size.
And the building that is to the right side, a white-colored square that you have, what, what, what is it?
That, that is an outdoor amenity space. It's a patio area right now. It could be, it could be a gathering space for the development. I think we showed a, I think we showed a gazebo in here with some, with some tables and chairs right now. Outdoor amenity space for, for everybody to use in the development.
Okay. And the last question I have is that on your drawing, it shows total 64 units, right? Out of that 12 are that one building with the affordable units, right? So the remaining 52 are for regular.
It's actually 13 affordable, 51 townhouses.
Okay.
I have a question. Is there going to be one HOA for the affordable and the other units?
If they're sold, as they are likely to be, so there'll be a homeowners association for the 51, and then there would be a condo regime for the 13 because of the structure of the building. So they would probably have a, a separate condo board that would be a, and that would be a, a participant in the HOA board.
Well, I think, Mr. Cokely, the DCA regulations-
This is an exp, I shouldn't even be talking about this. Mr. Oliris.
All right. I don't mean that. But it's, the DCA regulations require at least one of the board members to be elected by the affordable housing units. Doesn't mean that it'll be a house, affordable housing unit owner, but they get to elect one of the board members. And typically, it would be set up in one condo association.
Is then the affordable housing, is that a separate entity or part of the same entity?
Same entity.
Same entity?
Unless they're, they're renting them, but I don't think that's the proposal.
Yeah, the, the plan is to sell.
Right.
So these townhouses, and please forgive me, if one of the roofs goes, everybody has to pay for that?
That would be a common expense, probably.
Common expense.
You draw the regime, yep.
And I guess I'm concerned that you're going to have a separate something for the affordable housing versus the regular units, because we have something like that now in Bridgewater, and it created a few problems. I wish you would rethink that.
You think, what, what, I'm not sure if I- What do you mean? I don't, again, I don't mean to speak for you, but it's, it would be one condominium association?
Yeah.
With-
For the affordable housing?
No. In, in total, there would be one association. It would be 51 market rate units, and there would be 13 affordable units in the association.
Ah, I, that's, I didn't get that. I thought they were to be separate.
Listen, they could do it separately, I suppose. I haven't seen it done that way, but technically you could. But the, the, the regular way to do it would be, as I just said, with one condo association, and you have a mix of the units, right? And the affordable housing unit owners are represented by the fact that they get to elect one of the board members on the board.
All right. I'm just aware that Crossroads had two separate HOAs, and it created a lot of problems for the township.
Yeah, I could, I could see that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So if this is approved, would you be okay with the condition to do it as one association?
Yes. Yeah, we're, we're not, we're not fine-tuning that.
Yeah. I, I mean, really, that's probably more of a site plan discussion.
All right. Thank you, Rich.
At that time, yeah.
As far-
All right. Any more questions on the, the layout of the units? Well, let me, let me ask you then about the stormwater. So you, you did a preliminary stormwater report, correct?
Yes, we did.
And then the board asked you to do a soil study?
Did the soil testing, yes.
Did, and, and which, which firm did you use for that?
As a matter of fact, I actually forget the name of the firm. I'd have to go back and check.
All right, don't worry. We'll, we'll-
Back in October. I forget the name of the firm.
Yeah, I can't remember a lot of things, believe me. So, and then, then Mr. Burr wrote a comment letter.
Correct.
And you reviewed that, right?
Yes.
So, and will DEP have to give a permit for stormwater management on this site?
Because this site is going to require some, some DEP permitting for the access drive, which we mentioned early on in, in the process, we will need to have the DEP review the stormwater, as well as Mr. Burr's office also.
Based on, on the soil report that you obtained and your preliminary report and, and reading Mr. Burr's analysis, do you believe that the, that stormwater can be appropriately handled on this site in accordance with the regulations?
Yes. And in reference to Mr. Burr's February 20th, 2025 report, where he mentioned his review comments, we reviewed those comments, and we feel that we'd be able to address those comments in, in a site plan application if, if, if they were to be made conditions of approval to satisfy his, his technical, his technical comments.
Any more questions on stormwater?
I just want to confirm with Mr. Burr, because, you know, the slope is substantial from north to south. The three units to the south, and I guess they're on a private driveway, Bill? If you look at the, the site, the aerial, it is, boy, I can't even read it, Lot 42. It's three houses to the south of the property. And then you have Gray's Forest, and then two other additional properties on Talamini. So you're going to have six properties directly involved that if this doesn't go well on a rainy day, this could be a bad situation. What, just what's your, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question, Mr. Chairman. And I think it's, it's one that really is, is only going to get vetted properly once we get to a site plan.
Right.
That, in my opinion, is somewhat of the unfortunate situation here. And that's why I asked for additional information on stormwater. And that's why we issued the February 20th memo on stormwater, because it may very well be, at the end of the day, this thing can be designed from an engineering perspective to protect all the downstream property owners. But based on the, the 12 or 13 comments that I raised in February, there's still some uncertainty there.
Yeah. Would, would you consider this an interrelated issue to approval?
Repeat that?
Would you consider this an interrelated potential problem, you know, in a bifurcated case that we don't have?
Yeah, 100%. They're interrelated. And that, that, that's part of the issue that we can't fully get to the bottom of without having the site plan.
Right.
And, and again, you know, I, I said it at a prior hearing. And, and again, you know, I said it at a prior hearing, certainly Rob's office and the applicant has done some preliminary work that probably goes above and beyond other use variance cases. They haven't done the full gamut yet, and they haven't done the full engineering. So it still raises some question here that this thing can get built the way, you know, the way it's laid out on a colored rendering. That's why we raise those questions. So I respect, you know, Rob's opinion that, that come the site plan phase, this can be designed and stormwater can be managed properly. That's not a risk that, that the board and the township can take based on recent history of the storm events that we're getting.
And you both agree?
I have those concerns.
Thank you. And you both agree that there's substantial slopes on the site, including an area that has 30% slopes?
Yeah, there is. There's, there's not a lot of steep slopes, but there definitely are steep slopes on this property. We heard there's 407 trees that are gonna be removed. That, that also has a big impact on stormwater. And then when you talk, you know, FAR and impervious coverage values that are proposed at three times what the ordinance currently allows, add all that stuff up, and something's gotta give.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Michele, does DEP regulate stormwater?
Yes, DEP is one of the, is the regulating authority on stormwater besides the local municipality.
And would DEP scrutinize an application like this?
Based on our experience with DEP in the last two years, yes. They would, they would scrutinize it intensely.
If they were to scrutinize it intensely, and we then have the results of their scrutiny, what weight does that carry compared to, let's say, the township's assessment via its professional staff compared to the DEP?
I think what you would see here, and to Bill's points about the design and so forth, as I mentioned earlier on, this, this site, it's 11, it's a little over 11 acres of the lot area. The disturbance is just over 10 acres. Under the DEP rules, they typically want you to have now two and a half acres to a basin for runoff purposes. That's under their green infrastructure requirements. This current site, the way we have the stormwater designed preliminarily right now, and I will admit the fact that I've said that before, this was preliminary. But it was preliminary in the sense that we designed it under the, I'll call it the future 2100-year, 100-year storm. So we have to do two, two sets of precipitation calculations, one for current precipitation in the current year, and then one for the year 2100. And what that basically means is that the stormwater system is designed for that 2100-year, 100-year storm, which is a pretty intense storm event. It's one and a half times our current 100-year storm intensity. And the, and the system that you see on the plan, which basically amounts to eight stormwater basins that we show on there right now, would they be tweaked slightly once we go through final calculations? Yes, would one or two get slightly larger or slightly smaller? That could certainly occur. But we show eight basins on the plan right now that are designed to attenuate and, and reduce that runoff to rates that are gonna be equal to what the existing runoff is leaving the site under a wooded, under a wooded condition today. Not to mention that under 202, 206, there's a culvert that does regulate some runoff underneath the highway, and then you have, and you have a stream that's on the side of the site here that then flows down towards the driveways that service those existing homes. So the intent of the rules is to make sure that we don't generate any more runoff from the property than it would under current conditions today. And, and that's what the preliminary design here generally shows. And to Mr. Burr's point, yes, there are some calculations that still need to be done, but, but those calculations would further bolster the design to make sure that it meets all those objectives of the DEP and your township's requirements as well.
So where I lost you in the sauce a little bit was the weight that the DEP has compared to the township itself. So the DEP comes in, makes an assessment or a recommendation. That recommendation is passed on to you. You then are obligated to incorporate it into your design, and it still has to withstand the scrutiny of the township professionals.
Correct. You have two layers of review at, at the level of DEP, which has their scrutiny and review, and it's not even a recommendation. They're gonna review it and tell us, this is what, if they don't agree with something, they're gonna tell us to make a change. And if we want the permit, we need to make those adjustments to that. On top of that, you, Mr. Burr and his office also has the right to review those, review the stormwater and comment on it as well. The timing of that will depend on how this application moves forward from here and who gets the first look at it. But ultimately, before those plans are signed, both agencies and organizations will have looked at the plans, and both will have commented on the stormwater system, and we will have, we will have addressed all their concerns before the plans are signed.
But at this moment in time, because of the nature of the application and the information you have available to you and we have available, you couldn't make that determination simply because all those things would have to be understood or explained in a site plan which has yet to be determined.
I, I will say this, right now, what we show on the plan today is, at least, it's conservative from my perspective, because it's based on no infiltration, and it's based on a certain volume of water we needed to detain. It's, it's, it's still preliminary, and the way we see these stormwater designs ultimately evolve is they become tweaked and modified once we start getting all those review comments. And they ultimately becomes usually a little bit better than what you start with. But right now, we feel that we've started with something that covers the initial impact of that 2100-year storm, which is your biggest concern about water leaving the site, so that we're not impacting the downstream properties.
DEP review of stormwater doesn't occur in normal case until site plan approval is granted. Is that correct?
In, in the normal cadence, we would request site plan approval, and then we would go to the DEP, and then we would take both the comments from your, your engineer and the DEP and make that all work to satisfy everybody's, everybody's concerns.
Thank you.
Rob, based on the soil analysis, in your opinion, will there need to be blasting done for the basins and/or any of the dwellings?
The soils out here, and I just looked up to confirm, it was GTA, Geo-Technology Associates that, that did the report. It didn't show anything that, that mentioned heavy rock. You have your typical shell, and you get, start getting down to a certain depth. That's, that's, that's excavatable for this. But it didn't look like there was any need to blast for any, for any of the, any of the development.
Mr. Cokely, what are your thoughts about stipulation? I know it might be premature because this isn't site plan approval, but do no blasting to protect the residents around this property?
I have to think about that.
Sure, no problem. Mrs. Mink.
You know, on the site, I see all over the place proposed basins, number one, two, three, a total of eight of them. Is that for stormwater drainage or?
Yes, it is.
It is. Okay. But, you know, some units don't have anything close to the, the top.
Just, just keep in mind that the site, you know, drains from, this is the higher side of the property up here. And the lower side is down here, so you're not gonna have a basin up at the very top. You're gonna start placing them, you know, where the water starts running in, in, you know, that direction, towards that stream that's closest to the, to the roadway.
Okay, thanks.
Moving on to fire trucks, you may have touched on this, but is there adequate turning area for fire trucks on the site?
Yeah, so there was some comments from the fire officials' letter. I think he made a couple of comments over the course of, of the last year. We did provide a fire truck turning plan that showed that the site can accommodate your ladder truck, both coming in off of 202 and looping around the site. And then we would ultimately continue that and show it across the emergency access road as well, just to make, just to show that it all complies. There was also some comments in the letter about providing fire hydrants. I think he was asking for a total of five. We don't have the water system designed yet, but it would typically be a loop coming into the site, and we would provide the hydrants wherever he needs them to be on the property, and we'll work with him to make sure he's satisfied with that.
So in the course of your review, did you consider the disturbance that would be embodied in, in the plan that's on the easel, in other words, the 13 and 51 site plan, versus a site plan that would be involved if you did 12 residential homes in, ala the R40 zone? Did you consider the relative level of disturbance between the two plans?
It, it would be, if you were to look at the underlying zoning of what's permitted, which I think is 40, 48, 40,000 square foot lots in that zone, you would have similar, you would have, you wouldn't have as much disturbance, but you'd have similar disturbance clearing for roads, houses, driveways, backyards, and so forth on the property. I don't have the exact number of acreages or, or trees that would be cleared, but they would be, they would be comparable. It would be, it would be less, because it would be a single-family project as opposed to townhouses, but it would be, it would be still within, within multiple acres of clearing required. Definitely north of six to seven acres at least of clearing for a single-family project, you know, of, of that size on these lots.
And you may have mentioned this before, but did you move a lot line to create enough distance around the barn?
Yeah, that was done at, at the previous revision. We adjusted this red lot line that, that runs parallel to the barn housing structure here to make sure we had the right setback off of that. And we weren't right up against it. I think originally it was a foot and a half. Now we have 20 feet setback to comply.
Three acres to be conveyed to the JCC, that's not in your density or FAR calculation, is it?
It does not count towards any of those numbers.
All right, I don't have any further questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cokely. Rob, I'm gonna ask you the same question I asked you last August. Where would the 65th unit go?
Well, actually, under this scenario, Mr. Chairman, we, we do have some room still for units.
Could you show me where?
I took some units out.
Okay.
Over here, I say over here, next to Unit 64, next to Unit 37, next to Unit 51. I did pull some units out of there, actually even next to Unit 50. So because of going down to 51 townhouse units and putting 13 in the affordable building, now we do have some extra green space around the site.
We would lose some trees and some plantings, et cetera.
Lose some planting area, but again, I think that ultimately we'd like to enhance some of those additional areas with landscaping once the, at the appropriate time.
So you, you think you could add four more?
I, I think at least two to three more if push came to shove, but I, we're not proposing that.
I, I only ask that question because we're at the same place we were a year ago. In every case, you know, despite the fights I have with the lawyers and the, and the fights I have with professionals, I always want to find a yes. And if nothing else, Rob, you always do great work. You were in a lot of cases. Thank you for trying to help us get to yes. I don't think tonight, or this case is any different. We're always trying to get to yes.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for my kind of sarcastic answer. I appreciate, or question, I appreciate your answer.
You're welcome.
Any other board members? Questions for Mr. Michele? All right, board professionals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Michele, just one question about the, the new proposed affordable building. Are you aware of the, some of the regulations surrounding how the, the units, affordable units have to be, or are encouraged to be integrated into the, into the market rate as an inclusionary development?
I'm not totally 100% up on that requirement. I know there's some talk about inclusionary integration, but Mr. Cokely might be able to shed some more light on that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we would incorporate these units in, in some way so that they would be all, all within the 64 units and spread out, not, not all together. That would be our plan.
Would that have any impact on the setbacks, the floor-to-air ratio, the impervious coverage?
No, it would be just placement of the units throughout the project, and so that they're, assuming they were all sale now. Now, we could do the 13 affordable as rentals, and, and I think under the regulations, separate them on that basis. But right now, we're planning on sale, and we would spread those units out so that they're not all together.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, a couple of questions for you. So we heard, I think, earlier from Mr. Cokely that the project has evolved from 64 units to 60 to 52, and now we're back up at 64, right?
Yes.
And I, I assume how you got from 64 down to 52 was just taking some of the, the end units or a few units from each cluster off? So my question.
From the original 64 to 52?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, we reduced, I think they were all eight packs originally, and we reduced some of the, yes, we took the units off the ends to reduce the, the number of, of units.
So then by adding the 13-unit building where it's currently situated, can you just describe for us what impact, where you made up the additional units elsewhere on the site? Where did you add more units to the other building clusters?
I, I did not, I remember I started with eight, I started with eight units maximum per building cluster at, at the, at the most. I don't have the original plan here in front of me, but that's what I started with. I didn't put any more than eight back on any one grouping of building units. So I have an eight-pack that's on the southern portion, southeast. I have a seven-unit building on the southwest. On the north side of Road A, I have an eight-unit building. Then I have a seven-unit building behind that one. I have another seven-unit building to the left of, of that unit. And then I have three buildings along the northern property line where it's a five-unit, a four-unit, and a five-unit. So I broke that one up into three buildings, as opposed to possibly doing that with two, with two buildings. So I tried to spread it back out around the site, just adding basically like one unit back to certain buildings to, to get back up to that eight-unit number.
And to the northerly side of the property and the southerly side, where you're closest to the nearest adjacent residences, did any additional units get added? Additional disturbance or grading in the future have to get proposed in those areas?
No, the grade, no, no additional disturbance for grading. We actually did move behind units 15 through, nine through 15, which is the southwest corner of this, of the unit breakout, breakdown. We did move one basin that was right, right behind those units that was causing grading into the setback and closer to the property line. We shifted it off to the west, so this way we'd have, keep more of that existing buffer along that property line to those, to that, that southern, those two southern homes that are there.
Okay. You had testified about the emergency access exhibit, and I think you acknowledged that the base map for that plan was based on a prior revision, and it wasn't drawn to this current plan. If you would superimpose the access driveway, are there any conflicts, any issues if it was to be laid onto the current plan set?
No, because we, because of the end of where the road is on Road A, there's, there's no conflict with any units over there. And it's designed to work around that stormwater basin number seven that, that's on that lower corner there.
And we, we talked about the 407 plus or minus trees that need to be removed. If that access drive was to be installed, do you have any sense for how many more trees would have to get taken down in that area?
It's actually going through, it's running just to the north of that existing tree line. So it, it, it might just be a, a few trees at most, if any, because that area is actually an open field in, in this area. It will have to take down maybe two or three to get through to the JCC driveway. And there might be, you know, two or three that get nipped by it, but I can make an adjustment if need be once we find out a survey of the trees over there.
And from a grading? From a grading perspective, is that area relatively flat or graded?
Yeah, it's relatively flat. So the, the emergency access, emergency access would be basically placed at grade.
And last question on that too, I think Mr. Kula's question. Was that plan submitted to the Fire Marshal, do you know? Has he had eyes on that?
I don't remember if that was submitted. There was a number of submissions, Bill, that took place. I don't know if that emergency access plan was actually a formal submission at one time.
Okay.
But if there's any concerns about, I'll say the width of that, if, if he has a concern about the width, we'd be happy to make adjustments to it.
Okay. In terms of the amenities that are shown on your plan, you testified that there's a patio area currently shown, and maybe, maybe looks, what looks like, you know, a couple picnic benches, maybe a gazebo area.
Yes.
In your opinion, is that common for a project like this with 64 senior units?
It's not uncommon for a project like this. That, I, I will say this, that that area is, is somewhat of a, a placeholder for what could ultimately be there when we come to site plan. We acknowledge that we want to have some type of outdoor passive amenity space where people can gather on the property. We picked that spot because it's sort of central to, to the overall, overall property. What it ultimately might end up being could be shaped a little bit differently, because the seating could be reconfigured a little bit differently. But for a 60-unit, 64-unit development, typically to see an outdoor gathering space like that isn't uncommon. You don't, the project really isn't large enough to accommodate, you know, active recreational spaces like tennis courts or, or things like that on a site like this. So more something passive such as this would, would fit in with, with the, with the type of project we have here.
Would, would there be demand for a clubhouse space, fitness center, swimming pool? Is something like that common for a project like this?
No, given the size of it, it's, it's not.
You were doing okay there.
Could you switch to the microphone that's on the table?
I would say given, I'd say given the size of this project, the number of units, you really, you might not, you wouldn't see a clubhouse or a pool because of the fees associated with operating something like that for this scale of a project. It's rare to see those types of amenities on a project this size because of the costs associated with them.
Okay. And last question has to do with overall FAR and lot coverage on the newest plan. Can you just give us a sense, I think the chairman may have asked this, but I missed your answer. Give us a sense of what those numbers look like with the current proposal versus some of the prior proposals.
Sure, just give me a second to grab my note.
So if we go back to the original, I'll just call it the original 64-unit plan that we initially submitted to the board, the original lot coverage was 49.2% or 5.86 acres. So we're basically just slightly under that right now at 48.7% or 5.58 acres. So 0.3 delta roughly reduction in lot coverage going from a 64-unit townhouse project to a 64-unit inclusionary project with affordable housing. As far as FAR goes, the FAR that we were looking at on the original project was 0.48 floor area ratio, and we are now currently at, I believe it was 0.42 FAR.
And I'm going to ask you to take it a step further. At the May, I think it was the May meeting, although we didn't hear testimony from you about the actual plan revisions, I think Mr. Coakley discussed a plan that was prepared to show 52 units without the affordables. Do you have those numbers, just to give us a sense of where this has gone and where it's back to?
Just give me a second. So that 51-unit plan, the lot coverage on that plan was 45%. And the FAR was 0.39.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Rob. I'm going to ask you some questions regarding traffic safety, and my questions may seem too advanced for a use variance plan. However, if these questions cannot be addressed, that could be a real issue during the final engineering plan. So let me start with the truck circulation plan that you submitted. It is, I believe, Sheet 1 of 1, and the, the plan is called Fire Truck Turning Plan. Now, back in July of 2024, the fire marshal issued a letter requesting that you utilize a tower ladder truck in your analysis. And you did your analysis, you did your plan, and you have a ladder truck on your plan that is 41 feet in length. Now generally, tower ladder trucks, they go from 41 feet up to 63 feet. Did you consult with the fire department or did you choose the 41-foot truck independently?
We were familiar with the fire department's requirements, so I recall that we were going to use their ladder truck for the turning movements because I've used that one on other projects in town. So unless there was a discrepancy in how we transpose that into the program, that's what I thought was their, was their truck.
Okay, so you relied on your familiarity with the type of trucks that they use?
Yes.
Okay. Now, if you look at the turning template, and I'll give you some time to find it.
I found it here.
Okay. If you look at the exiting fire truck, you see that there is a solid line swinging around the turning movement and a dash line. The solid line designates the path of the tires, and the dash line designates the front of the overhang. So if you look at the dash line, it looks like it is over or touching the curb on the far side and also touching a symbol that I'm not sure what it is. It's a, it's a round symbol with an X. Is that a pole or a lighting fixture?
Yeah, I'm looking at the plan now. I would think it might be either a sign or a pole. It's on the curb line, which leads me to believe it might be a sign.
Normally, it wouldn't be a sign, it would be a pole or a fixture normally. A sign is usually a blade with a dot.
Usually, but-
Yeah. I'm pointing this out because it is very close to it, so if the driver of the fire truck turns the wheel half an inch to the right or to the left, that truck may hit that pole or that fixture, or the overhang may go over the curb and impact where perestria may be. And I want to make sure you can correct this in your file design because right now, this looks too close for comfort, basically.
I'm looking at it, and yeah, even though I'm looking at a small, half-size print, I agree. I think with some minor modifications of the, I'll say it's the tip of the island so the truck can make the turn, you know, probably pull that back a little bit, I think that we'll be able to make sure we can provide that turning radius leaving the site. I agree with that.
I'll move on to side distance questions. So you did a side distance analysis, and I will go to Sheet 1 of 1 also, and it's entitled Side Distance Plan and Profile. Do you recall what speed limit did you use for your side distance calculations?
I know we worked with Mr. Keller's office on preparing this plan. I can't remember if it was 45 miles an hour on that strip of 202-206, but he did provide us with the required distance of, I think we got 542 to the north and 500 to the, to the south.
Right. The speed limit based on Mr. Keller's report is 50 miles an hour on Route 206. And if we do a minimum analysis, we use 50, which would give us a required side distance of 555 feet. And if we want to use a conservative analysis, specifically in this case being that this is an age-restricted development, we add five miles an hour to the speed limit, so we take it from 50 to 55, and the 55 miles an hour speed limit would require a higher intersection side distance, 610 feet, which, based on the plans, that is not achieved.
Well, based on the plan, we stopped at 542, based on Mr. Keller's original recommendation. I do know from visiting the site and looking at the distances and the profile that I have there on the plan, if we were to extend that to 600 feet, we don't hit the crest of the high point on the north side of 202-206. So I believe 600 could be achieved based on the topography that's out there.
Now, on the other side, it shows that you have achieved a 500-foot clear side distance, and just to remind the board and everyone else listening, you would need a minimum of 555 feet and a desirable distance of 610 feet. Your plan shows 500-foot clear side distance. Is that the maximum you can achieve, or you're going to give us the same answer that this could be also extended?
There's additional distance to the south as well, from being out there on the property. I could say you can achieve at least an additional 100 more feet going, looking to the south.
And my last question regarding the profile, and thank you for doing the profile, by the way. Many engineers do not do the profile.
Welcome.
This gives us an indication of exactly what the driver is seeing or not seeing. So in your profile, if you look in the center of it, you do show that you have 3.5 viewing height at Station 161, which is adequate. But then if you move to the right and you look approximately at Station 181, or actually 178, you find that that viewing distance has diminished, and you don't show it, and I want to make sure you don't have an obstruction due to the irregularity of the pavement or the berm area that would obstruct the visibility of the driver. And also, we need to pay attention to the ground cover. The ground itself may be three and a half feet below the sightline, but if you have vegetation, that could be obstructed.
Yeah, and looking at the plan, my plan shows three and a half foot viewing height, you know, leaving the site for the driver's eye.
Correct.
And I'm actually showing three and a half foot for the object height on this plan here. So I know based on the topography, that, that distance between the sightline and the grade varies a little bit, but most of that, for at least 300-plus feet of it, is over pavement, so I'm not concerned about any obstructions on the pavement itself. The rest of it's by an existing driveway and lawn area, so I know that is, from being out at the site, there wasn't any major visual obstructions looking both in that north direction. Of course, the south direction is over, the majority of it is over the highway to begin with, so there's no obstructions there. But I do take into, I do recognize the point that, yes, if there's vegetation within that sightline, you'd be hampered by it, but looking at where this location is and being out there, I didn't see any major vegetation in that first 100 to 150 feet that would impair the driver's eye looking up the, looking up the highway.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Maurice.
So can you just repeat what you said about the southbound? Can you just repeat what you said about the visibility of the highway south?
So to achieve safety at an intersection, you need to provide the driver with enough visibility at the stop sign. So when the driver is at a stop sign and driver is looking to the right or to the left, that driver needs to see clearly a certain distance, and that distance is dictated by the speed limit or the prevailing speed. And in this case, ideally, you would want to provide about 600 feet of clear visibility to the driver. Now, the driver is sitting in the vehicle, and based on national criteria, the eye level above the ground level is about three and a half feet. And the object that the driver is looking at, according to Rob's plan, is also three and a half feet. So that means if I'm looking to the right or to the left to make a turn, I need to see a three and a half foot object at 600 feet. Now, if in between, there is an obstruction that is three and a half feet or three feet, that's going to obstruct my, my vision, even though on the plan, I can show a straight line. But in reality, in my vehicle, I'm looking to the right, and if there is a berm area or whatever it is that is obstructing that visibility, then I don't have the side distance. And that's what I was questioning, Rob, about.
So then he said that he had additional, so how much visibility is there? You said something to 500, maybe 550, but it was about 500, and then he said it was another 100.
So that, we don't know. You need to do it, and you need to do a field check to verify this. Rob said that-
Just tell me, what do we know? What number do we know?
We know that we have 500.
500?
And Rob responded and said, he believes-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I mean, we know we have 500, what do we need?
Ideally, we need about 600.
And they're saying we have, what, 550?
Rob is saying he believes there is an additional 100, even more, based on the geometry of the roadway, but that is not reflected on the plan.
Exactly, that's what my question is.
Yes.
On the, on the plan, there is how much?
500 feet on one side and 502 feet on the other side.
40.
Yep. Thank you.
Maurice, based on your questioning, would less units create a better situation for traffic to traverse this project, including emergency vehicles?
That's a good question, Mr. Chairman. Absolutely not. The number of vehicle does not impact all these parameters we're discussing.
Yeah.
They're all physical parameters. They have to do with the geometry of the roadway, the position of the vehicle, whether there is 10 vehicles or one. If it fails, it fails. However, if you don't have the side distance and you have more vehicles, you increase the chances of a collision.
Okay. Now, inside the property, inside the dimensions, I think it's A10 that Rob was speaking to, if there is less physical units inside, would there be more room for roadway? Potentially.
I would have to say no. The roadway is defined, and if you widen the roadway toward their side, let's say, you may actually exacerbate the side distance and not help it, because when you move back, now you have more obstruction and not less. So widening may not be the answer here.
Now, again, I'm talking about inside the project, not the site outside.
Okay.
I'm worried about fire trucks hitting things.
Oh, yeah.
If there were less units, would there be less likelihood of that happening?
Yes, so they used a 41-foot fire truck, and if the fire truck is 45 or 50, or the largest one available, 63, that may not be able to negotiate the site, so the site has to shrink to provide the proper geometry for a larger truck to negotiate the site.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Anyone else? All right. Members of the public, questions for Mr. Moschello's testimony? Okay. Oh, there we go, we got one. Got to take her. Good evening. Service, your name and address, please.
Rob Esposito, 738 West Foothill. So I have a question about the traffic as well, and not sure if I'm going to be able to explain it clearly, but-
We speak to the mic.
Sorry. Oh, thank you. So I didn't fully follow the discussion that we were just having on the feet, 550 feet, 600, but I'm trying to picture how it's going to impact the traffic between, there's West Foothill, Foothill on the other side, and then the driveway for this, this place, right? And you've got people coming 50-plus miles an hour over that hill, coming southbound on 202-206. It's already difficult to pull out on West Foothill, either direction, north or south. You've got people coming out of Foothill, and now you're going to have people coming out both directions out of this place. So traffic's heading northbound, you're trying to pull out northbound in front of them, so you've got to floor it to get in front of the traffic that's coming 50 miles an hour on your, on your rear end. Meanwhile, Foothill's also pulling out on you, you're going to have to slam on your brakes if somebody pulls out on you. It's just, it's a, it's a cluster of traffic already, and I think adding this, I don't understand all the technical details of the stopping distance and all of that, but just driving this road constantly, I don't understand how this is going to work. And if, unless you force people to make a right only out of it, making a left, like if you, if you go to the farmer's market that's there and you try to make a left out and head northbound, it's, you either wait there or you take a risk and you pull out and somebody flies up behind you. I'm just trying to understand how this is going to work.
Our traffic engineer did give testimony as to the validity of the driveway and the trip generation and the turning and so forth. trip generation and the turning and so forth. We were just discussing sight distances, and given its location, you're actually further away from West Foothill, so you have more sight distance looking to the north, so you have time to see that car coming over the crest, you know, before you pull out of your driveway. If you're coming out of West Foothill, you have less of a distance to see that car coming over the crest coming southbound. And conversely, you have, there's a lot of sight distance looking south on 202206. So again, I mentioned 600 feet. We know the road dips down here, there's a slight low point here where there's a culvert, it comes up again a little bit, but there's a lot of sight distance. And that farm driveway, which is located where my point, my finger is here, on the middle of the site, gives you less time to do that. With the driveway being up here, you have more time to see those cars before you pull out, actually, so...
Sorry, the driveway is up higher, up there?
The farm driveway is located, I'll put my pointer here. Our farm driveway is actually in the middle of the site, right about here. So this driveway is further to the north, so you have more time to react to those cars coming northbound. And conversely, you have more distance away from that high point, whereas if you're coming out of West Foothill, you have less time to see those cars coming over the ridge.
So if I'm making a right out of West Foothill, and you have like a fraction of a second to see a car that's coming over that hill, so now I'm making a right, I see the car coming, I floor it to get up to 50 miles an hour, you've got somebody coming out of that driveway...
This car could see you a lot easier to see you coming out and could see that car come over West Foothill than the time you have to make that same right turn. And that's just conjecture, I'm not a traffic engineer, based on the discussions of what you're experiencing, that's what we have there.
Yeah, and I don't know. I mean, in theory, and the technicals, maybe that's true, but I, sitting at West Foothill and Foothill and going both directions daily, I just, I don't see it working.
Understand.
The other question was, so I didn't follow how we got from 65 or whatever the number was down to, why did we go from 65 to 52? What was the reasoning? I'm not sure who to direct that to, but what has changed between those number changes? Like, why did we go down to 52? And then why was it okay to bump it back up to 64?
We started at 64 on the original project. We, with discussions with the board and the layout of the project and the townhouse units, we discussed possibly reducing those unit counts down to 60, and then we talked about going down to 52. We never actually presented the 52-unit plan, what we were going to, and then based on back and forth and hearing discussions with the board about an affordable component, we went down to 51 townhouse units and then added 13 affordables to meet the 20% set aside, to bring us back up to the original number of 64.
Rob, just for clarity, the board didn't ask you to take the number back up. The township Affordable Housing Planner had discussions with Rich, with our planner Catherine. Originally, you wanted to build, basically write a check instead of building affordable housing units, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And our planner for the township said, based on previous fair share housing settlements in the previous round, that is not acceptable. We communicated that to the applicant, and here we are. We did not ask them to go back up. They chose to go back up. So let's not confuse that.
I'm just confused as to why, why did it go from 64 all the way down to 52?
That was just based on conversations and discussions with the board and the professionals over time about the layout of the project and where certain units were located and just how that laid out on the site. It didn't affect the roadway network as much as it just had a certain layout to it in terms of coverage and unit locations and things of that nature. So we ultimately started at 64, worked our way down to 52, and then because of the affordable component, we took it back up to 64 units.
So what has changed between the 52 and the 64? Why, I'm sure there was a good reason to go down to 52, like why would you not want to build more units? So you compromised to go down to 52, but now you're back up to 64.
The difference is, going back up to the 64, but doing it in an affordable building, still leaves some additional green space around the site to add the amenity space and not have, and as I pointed out to Mr., as the chairman asked me before, could I fit some additional units on the property, where on the prior plan, we were maxed out at 64? In this instance, it's not as maxed out as you would think, because there's additional green space around the unit. So it made for a better layout with the affordable building and the amenity space to allow for that for the residents, while also allowing some additional green space around the site that was more tighter under the prior applicant, under the prior 64-unit plan.
Okay. And, sorry, one more quick question. The tree, you said, I'm sorry, 408 trees or something coming down, right? From a previous meeting, I overheard something about, like a tree has to be a certain size to be considered a tree in that context. Is that accurate, or?
I think it's six or eight inches is the minimum size that's used when counting trees on a property, per the ordinance.
So is there a count of total trees? Because I'm just concerned that you look and you see nothing but trees, and you say you're taking down 408, but really, you're clearing the whole area between...
Anything under six inches, you don't, we don't typically, it's not counted as a tree. It's a small, it's a small, it's a small tree, but it's not going to count the same as a, we don't count anything eight inches and greater is counted in the number.
Okay. So the whole thing's cleared out, we put up, what was it, 100 and something trees to replace it, right?
Minimum of 185. We'll probably be north of 200 once we enhance some of the buffering, both to the north and to the south on the project site, yes, and interior to the site as well, with shade trees and the like.
Is that the only buffering? Like, what happens? Because I've seen other developments go up where they throw some trees in the ground, they die within a year, and now it's all wide open. So is there any guarantees that that buffer is going to actually be there?
There's two things under site plans. One, you're a site plan application, so, and I'll leave the legality of this to Mr. Coakley, but you are obligated to typically maintain that buffer in perpetuity as part of a site plan application. So if a tree dies, the builder or developer usually has a two-year guarantee on that tree. The town requires a two-year maintenance guarantee for any planting. So if something dies in the first two years, developer is required to replace it. If it dies after that, it's typically a requirement of the homeowners association to maintain that buffer. And this is just, because this is still coming in for just the use aspect of it, some of the landscaping on here has not been fully worked out yet. There could be the opportunity for some berming along some of the property lines, once we get into the final grading of the project site itself. So our goal is to, even though you have residential to the north, residential to the south, we do want to be good neighbors, we want to provide the buffering, and that's something we're going to, we would look at as part of site plan to enhance those buffers. Because of the amount of trees we're removing, we want to plant as many back as we can on the site.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, sorry for taking longer than expected.
No sweat, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Hi there.
So I'm Marinelli, I live at 809 Route 202206, so I'm one of the homeowners that is about right, a little bit outside of... So I have a question.
If you could just talk into the microphone.
You said that you were going to, you moved the buffer, the basin, away from our property line, right?
Is this your house here in the middle?
Yes.
Yes, there was a basin that was right, right back here behind the units, I think it was closest to your house, and we moved it over to the southwest, over here.
Would that impact the flow of water to my property?
It's actually going to reduce the flow of water to your property.
How does that work if it would be up there?
Well...
Because right now, there's a big hill.
Everything comes this way, right? Generally speaking, with the topography, flows in this direction and this direction towards the stream, so...
If it goes that way, and the basin is up there, how is it...
The basin's going to be piped down to the stream down here. So we'll collect the runoff, both with the roofs, the roads, there'll be drainage systems within the road, the roofs will be collected, and that'll get piped into the basins, and then those basins will be piped down to a discharge point adjacent to the stream. So it will reduce runoff to your property over time, if it's built, if the project is built. Because right now, everything just flows just towards your property.
Well, no, there's a big hill, though. There's a big mound.
Back here in this corner, right here, yes, yes. Actually, part of that, part of that mound is staying, we're not removing that mound.
And so you said also that there's going to be trees along, so there'll be trees along the whole line?
Ultimately, we will make sure...
Right now, I think I see three trees.
And there's probably about 25 trees we're proposing here right now, and we will add, ultimately add some more to infill around those existing trees.
And how big are those trees?
Typically, when you're planting at site plan, the evergreens are eight to 10 feet, typically six to eight, eight to 10, and the deciduous trees are typically two and a half inch caliber, so anywhere from 10 to 12 feet when they're initially planted.
And you also mentioned that there's a stream in the front that grows, that goes down. There is a stream.
Yes.
And you said that helps collect the water. I don't know if you are aware that whenever there's a storm, there's a bridge that goes, you have to go over a bridge to get to our property, the properties?
Yeah, down over here.
Right. It floods, it floods. The garbage pails, just, they float. And that's not even with a big storm. So I'd like to know, I don't believe that this project is going to help the condition, the flooding. I think it's going to make it worse. And I don't know if you're aware, the other house that you access, it's the first house up that, not up the driveway, it's the first house...
The, on the property today?
Yeah.
There's an existing structure, maybe right about here, and then the other house is back here. Oh, you mean the farmhouse, the farm stand?
No. So there's three houses that run...
On the southern property line, there's three houses...
Oh, I'm sorry, these existing houses.
Right.
I'm sorry, I was talking about that, the structure's on site.
So there was a storm, and I don't know if you're aware, but the bridge to that first house was taken out by the storm, and the owner had to exit through my property. So I don't, you know, there's a concern about this water.
At the end of this case, when we're done with all the witnesses, I'm going to let members of the audience speak for or against the case, and you can bring all this up, you can show pictures.
I was just asking questions if he was aware of that.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Robert Kerr, 775 West Foothill. I'm sure you've seen that they've relined or they repaved 202206?
I don't know. Also, okay, I haven't been out there in a few weeks, but I'll take that.
I would have thought you would have been prepared for this then, because the question I'm going to ask you is, with their lining now, the sideline, usually, I guess it's the white line, is almost right at the edge of the curbing. What is the process that you're going to keep cars from rolling down into the culvert or the stream area? Are you going to be putting up some sort of...
Along the state highway?
Yeah.
That's the purview of the state, that's not us. We don't control the state highway.
So you're saying, what else?
It's the state's jurisdiction, the highway.
All right, I understand that, but are you going to be contacting the state saying, hey, we're going to be digging a culvert here?
I'm not digging a culvert on the road here. I'm adding an entry point across from the existing driveway that's there today.
Okay, I understand that.
So we're closing off the driveway that's there today that goes to the farm stand.
But what I'm asking is, at one point, the gentleman had said that there, I don't know if it was a traffic planner or not, said they would attempt or try to do a left turn into the new property.
Yes. Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a left turn lane, there's striping there today, if you're traveling northbound on 202...
Have you seen the striping since they just redid it? That's what I'm asking.
No, I've not seen the striping since they just redid it.
There is no room for a left turn lane.
Well, I have not seen, the striping that I have on my plan showed room for a left turn lane. So if the state did something different than what we just currently have now, we'll need to take a look at that and see what they, see what they did.
But that's a major issue, is that the more you put traffic, three lanes of traffic there, it's a two-lane highway, and coming south, there is a left turn lane to go onto Foothill Road. There is another left turn lane to go into the vet's office there.
Yes. I designed that 15 years ago.
Yeah, how we got it, I don't know, it's a private thing, but, so you're going to be applying to the state to put a left turn lane for northbound traffic into the property, is that right?
Yes, yes. And I could tell you, I designed this left turn lane into the vet 15 years ago. So we went to the DOT to get that approval, we worked with a traffic engineer to do that, and the intent is to do the same thing on this side. If the DOT repaved the road and changed some of the striping, we'll have to deal with that as part of our application to adjust it.
Okay, so that will be taken into consideration then?
Absolutely, yes, yes. If they did something different from what was currently shown on that aerial right now, we'll have to take a look at that and address that with the DOT.
All right, so from the driveway south to the, as the driveway makes the turn, like this, so from your driveway to the highway, that road or that grass area there, is that going to be level or is that going to be sunken down as a, like a catch base?
You mean this road here? The intent would be...
In that area there, where your hand is now, just that whole green area down?
I want it to be level or slightly raised. I don't want to go down into a hole and then come back up.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I'm just wondering, as cars are coming there, that they're not going to be going off the edge of the roadway and...
No, no, the intent is not, is not to do that, no.
Okay, so it is a level area there?
Yes, yes, it is.
But not until you get to where the culvert across the highway is?
Well, the culvert is...
Then it becomes a...
Culvert is down here, where you start getting the steepness on the side of the slopes, where that's, that's the purview of the state. But up here, we're going to create a flat, level surface for cars to pull into the, into the development, the road's going to, the way that grading plan shows it now, it starts coming up away from 202206, the whole site slopes up from 202206, so you're not going to go down to go back up.
No, I understand going up into the development, I'm just concerned along the highway.
Yeah, no, we want to make sure we have the adequate distance there for a car to make that, to make that turn into the site.
All right, thank you.
Bruce Levinson, I have the veterinary hospital that you're talking about. We have had from, for the last 13 years, issues with cars slamming on their brakes, not knowing whether they're going to turn into our driveway or Foothill. It has been an issue from day one. Seen another driveway across, and I spoke to Rob, and I trust Rob, he did my site, but having three driveways right there, because there's one house, one house just north of the entrance to this, having those three right there together seems like a real issue plus photo. You know, I just wanted to make that clear. We've always had issues with it, this is adding another driveway. I thought, the one reason I came was to see if that driveway entrance could be south of where it is proposed to be.
Dr. Levinson, I am a customer.
Oh, yeah.
For 10-plus years, I asked the same question, just so you know.
As long as it's being addressed, I trust Rob, but it is a concern for me.
So again, your question is, can it be moved south? Because you've personally seen situations with traffic risks.
Tons.
Okay, thank you.
It's always been proposed for the Foothill to have a light, you know, as long as, as long as I've known you, so that would help a lot.
Do you want to ask Rob if a traffic light might help?
We spoke earlier, you know, I told him my issue, my concern, when that will happen, who knows?
And we did speak about the potential about moving the driveway, but as I explained to Dr. Levinson, that closing off the one that's there now and moving it up from a geometry standpoint made, and talking to our traffic engineer, lining it up with your existing driveway makes sense. I know there were some issues for visibility to see your driveway because of the wetlands on the east side of 202206, and we actually tried to clear some of that vegetation, and we were unable to do that because of the state regulations on that, on that, that northbound side of the highway. So it was always a quick coming up, and then your driveway just appears. And when we did your site, we knew it was, of all the locations to put it, we couldn't go any closer to Foothill, and we couldn't go out onto Foothill Road. So we, that was the, out of all the locations on the site, that was the best place for it, for better or for, or worse at the time, because of that, because of that northbound traffic flow.
A lot of entries right there, so...
Business is good.
So, thank you, good to see you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to take a break. If there's more questions, we can pick it up right after. It's 8:50, let's come back at 9:00 PM. We're going to adjourn for 10 minutes. Thank you.
Chairman Fuze?
I'm here.
Mr. Waidali?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah.
Mrs. Amin?
Yeah.
Mr. Bonjourno?
Here.
Mr. Gasky's absent. Mr. Fresco?
Yes, here.
Mr. Seacat is absent. Mr. Vesio is absent. Mr. Kula?
Here.
Mr. Gabbit?
Here.
Mr. Alar?
Here.
Mr. Burr?
Here.
Ms. Hamad?
Here.
And Mr. Rashad.
All right, we left off with questions from the public on Mr. Mosello's testimony. If there's anyone else that would like to ask questions, please come forward.
Mark Simon, 807 Route 202-206. I abut this project and the JCC at the same time. As far as the emergency vehicles you were talking about with an entrance into this property, if our bridges get wiped out, one already has, which was brought to your attention by my neighbor, Don Marinelli, we have no way getting out. These are two flag lots. Do we have access to this emergency vehicle entrance?
I was only discussing, we're only discussing.
Sure.
I understand the issue. And I'm sympathetic.
Well, I can see that. There's going to be increased traffic that, you know, there's, there's like five or six parking spaces for all steeds. Farm stand down by the street.
I really want to accommodate you, but comments have to happen at the end of the case. I'll give you as much microphone time as you want to make comments for or against, but right now, we have to have questions on Mr. Mosello's testimony.
Okay.
Anything that he talked about, you can ask questions about.
I see.
Okay.
So, I'll sit down now then, right?
You can ask more questions. It's just, at the end, we have to follow a very strict policy guideline for how we conduct the meetings, because it's quasi-judicial. Everything that happens here could potentially end up in front of the township council on appeal or in front of a judge. We just have to have this rigid structure. I apologize, but it's just the nature of the thing that we have to...
Is there any mention about a fence along the property line?
Ask Mr. Mosello.
So as of right now, there's no fence proposed along the property line. But as I mentioned in my previous testimony, we talked about enhanced buffering and screening both on the northern property line and the southern property line. So that's something we could, we could consider, if, in addition to landscaping.
Privacy fence, tall enough?
Could be a six-foot-high privacy fence.
Six feet?
Six feet is typical, you know, solid. We could consider that. I have to check with my line.
Like I was telling you before, the, there's a rise between the back of my house and what I could see. It's 10 feet grave coming down. Six feet's not going to work. Trees, you have some space kind of far apart where they grow together where I, you know, would block out what's back there. And I only get a, what, three or four behind my house?
Well, there's probably about 15 or so right now on the plan, in the area behind, behind the house here, along your property line. But again, as I mentioned, we would certainly be amenable to enhancing any buffering, you know, along the property line. I also don't want to encroach, there's existing trees there now that I want to take into account as well. So we'd want to plant and infill both with the existing.
Will we go down to the highway?
We can only go so far as the, we could look at that, yes.
See what's going on back there?
As I mentioned, we can look to enhance that, yes.
We're going to get you on the microphone, Mr. Coakley.
Mr. Forgian would be happy to meet with all the neighbors and where they could express their particular concerns, and maybe they could be adjusted. We'll set up a meeting if that's, if you'd like.
Okay.
Thank you for that, Mr. Coakley, wonderful.
Before or after you get approved?
Sir, I can tell you, this application's only for the use variance aspect, and what you're asking about would be site plan related. So if this application is approved for the use, they will have to come back to this board for a site plan application, and at that time or between now and then, they would have time to sit and meet with you and the neighbors as to what it is you'd be looking for.
We'll meet with you now or then. We like to work things out with people.
Okay, what I brought up about the, our access to emergency roads?
As far as the developer of the townhouse unit, that would be something we could work with. Mr. Cohen has different considerations.
I agree with you.
I said, as far as the 821, the applicant for the townhouse units, making adjustment with various neighbors so that they could get emergency access would not be something we would resist. But you have different considerations.
Like I said, if our bridges get knocked down...
Right, absolutely.
We can't get out.
That's the purpose of this.
Well, just to be clear, I indicated that we're discussing.
Right, yes.
I'm just not in a position to commit.
Yeah, the JCC has safety issues, and they have a whole host of issues that...
I don't want to get into the whole discussion, but the real conversation during that phase is, I assure you...
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Lisa Ferrara, 788 West Foothill.
Sorry, your last name again?
Ferrara. So I share the same traffic and water concerns, but I do have some questions, some other questions. Tree, the trees that we're talking about cutting down, anything less than its six inches in diameter is not a tree, right?
Under the ordinance, it wasn't counted as, as a tree.
Okay, that's my question. So the trees you're planting will all be at least six inches in diameter?
No, the trees we're planting will be typically two and a half inches to three inches in diameter is the typical planted size. And typically, for deciduous, they're, as I mentioned, between 10 and 12 feet, maybe 14 foot in height, planted, and then they, you know, they grow over time. Evergreen trees are between, usually, six and eight, or eight and 10 foot in height. Evergreens are measured based on height, not diameter.
But why does that count as a tree to, if you're putting... But why does that count as a tree to, if you're putting it in, it's less than six inches in diameter, but?
It counts as a, as a new planted tree. And eventually over time, that tree grows and that's, you know, the way it's looked at is as far as the ordinance goes and planting goes.
Okay, so, all right. Regarding the water, you said that there's no basin, there's no basin in the northwest or north at all?
Um, as far as north goes, there's no basin on the northwestern portion of the project site. The basins start on the northeast side of the site and then on the inside of the Loop Road, we start with the basin over here. But there's no basins right up here along this property line.
And which way does the water run?
The water runs basically in this direction from the north to the south flowing towards Route 202-206. I know there's, might be a slight break in the topography towards the south, but it generally flows in this direction towards the highway.
So, what about the water that's running from above in those back homes?
Say it again?
So, if there's no basin above, the water that's coming from the northwest, like?
So, this water that comes onto the site?
Yep.
We'll collect it and we'll put it into our stormwater system.
But you're not collecting it until it's already passed all those homes, right?
Um, no, because, yeah, we have to grade out the plan, but typically speaking, in the rear yards of these homes, there would be some type of drainage that would collect that water and bring it into the drainage system. I can't bring the water right up against the structure. I have to drain away from the house 15, 20 feet. I have to have drainage there to pick up that runoff and then I pipe it into the road network or into a basin, depending on where I'm going to bring it on site.
It's concerning because there's a lot of, there's a lot of water issues. A lot of our basements have been flooded already, so.
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going to pick that, we're going to pick up whatever's coming off your properties. We have to collect it.
I haven't heard any talk of noise pollution or light pollution. Just since I've lived here in the area, which is over 10 years, the noise has gone up considerably as well as the light pollution. What is this going to do to the level of noise and light?
It's, it's a residential development, so it, the noise is a resident, is typical to a residential development. You have homes, residential homes there that people live in them. So, your noise is, it's minimal based on a residential use.
When you cut down all those trees, aren't you increasing noise and?
No, you're not increasing the noise. You're, you have a use that's going to be residential to a residential use. You have people living in those homes. Your rear yards of these units are abutting the rear yards of the residential units. So, you have minimal noise generating structures behind those units. You have an air conditioning unit, basically, is what generates noise for those, those units.
Shouldn't there be a study on noise and light pollution?
Under the, under the residential standards, the project would comply with the state noise standards at the property line. It's a residential project. You're not going to study noise from a single, from a townhome. It doesn't gen, there's no noise generating from it. It's not a, it's not an industrial facility. It's not a large HVAC unit that you might see on the top of an office building or a cooling plant that generates noise. It's a, it's a residential air conditioning unit that's in the back. You wouldn't do a study for that.
64 though, right?
Yeah, but you only have 10 to 15 along that property line, 64 in, you know, the whole project.
Seems like there should be a study on that just because I'm, I've already experienced that with the mosque and other development that's happened right around my, my house. So, I would think that there should be a study on that. And I guess why, why did we choose an area that's not zoned for this? So, you're increasing, right, from 12 to 64 or whatever, however many units should be on 12 acres to 64? Why not choose a zoning, an area that's zoned appropriately? Because I think, you know, we chose to live where we're living because of zoning laws. So, now to change that, you're changing the character. You would agree, it's completely changing the character of that neighborhood, right?
This is a different development than if there were 14 single-family homes. But if there were 14 single-family homes, again, as I meant, I talked about earlier, if I did 14 single-family lots, there would be nothing from stopping a homeowner on that single-family lot from clearing every tree on that piece of property.
Right, but you're not cramming 64 units.
No, but I can, if I was a single-family home, I can cut down all the trees. I can put a large pool in my backyard. I can do whatever. I can, I can do different things in a single-family home. Here, you, what you see on the plan in terms of the development is what's going to be there as an HOA. The, the area is, is regulated, the screening and buffering here is actually regulated under the site plan. Single-family homeowner could clear right up to the property line. And, and, and that's what you would have. So, you have, you have different controls in place for a project like this as opposed to single-family lots.
As a single-family homeowner, choosing this area for that reason, I mean, I chose that because of the greenery and because of the character, and this is changing that. So, why not pick an area that's already zoned for appropriately?
Well, I can't speak to why my client chose the property. He negotiated his deal with this landowner for developing it with, with this particular project.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the members of the public? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Mosello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I don't have any more witnesses tonight. I tried to have Mr. Keller come just to testify as to the issue that was raised by a report from Sergeant Hennessy back on, six months ago. And, but he did write a report on that, that Hennessy report, remembering that Mr. Hennessy or Sergeant Hennessy had previously issued a report saying he had no comment on the project and he had a second report where he had a comments on the project. But we'd like to, to hand up Mr. Keller's report from today addressing Mr. Hennessy's report or Sergeant Hennessy's report and ask you to accept that report as if he testified to it. It's a signed report.
Yeah, I don't think we could, you know, for the same reason that we don't accept letters from the public, we can't really accept that as his testimony. We would really need him to come in. I suppose Maurice might have some questions as to whatever this report says. We haven't seen it yet. If you wanted to hand it up, you certainly could. You would have to have some time to look at it and then Mr. Keller could come and testify.
In the, in the alternative, we, we make another suggestion and that, that is that the board go ahead based on the current record without any further evidence from Mr. Keller. But in the event that the approval is granted, it could be subject to Mr. Keller coming back to testify on site plan approval.
All right, so you're suggesting that the board vote and if approved, there'd be a condition, I'm not sure what the condition would be. Condition?
Condition would be that Mr. Keller would come back and testify on site plan approval about traffic, any traffic issues that still are in the board's mind at that point.
What if the testimony wasn't satisfactory to satisfy the traffic concern at that point?
Well, that would be, this is a bifurcated application, so unfortunately or fortunately, the, the whole approval process is subject to being relooked at essentially at the time of site plan approval.
Yeah, but you're asking for approval up to 64 units.
Right.
And that's based on what we see and know and hear and heard testimony on with respect to the traffic that will be generated by the 64 units. So, I don't know how the board votes to approve 64 units with traffic testimony to come with the site plan.
Well, they would have his report and, and then if they, I would, I would think that this, well, anyhow, they would have his report and, and any approval would be subject to him coming back to testify on site plan. And under the statute, you know, if you, if a board gives a bifurcated use variance and the applicant comes in for a site plan approval, basically every issue in the case is still, is open on site plan approval.
Except that you would have a D1 for 64 units, right, up to 64? So, if, if you want the board to vote on a D1 for up to 52, we could do that. And then if his testimony is satisfactory to get you to 64 at site plan, then we can maybe do it that way.
Let me confirm with my client.
Be, it would be 11. 20 percent, yeah, right? About 11. Yeah, it's 20 percent of the total, so you've got to do a little math, but yeah, it's about that, about 11.
Right. I think we, we would prefer to continue with our present site plan for 64 units, of which 13 are affordable. And we would give an extension to another date where Mr. Keller would come back and, and polish up his testimony.
Okay. Okay. And then that's your last witness, Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll tell you, I got excited. 52, maybe 41 market and 11 affordable for a total of 52.
Your mathematician skills are unparalleled.
The attorney on my left.
Might be 12, but yeah.
Just putting it out there. You want to confirm one more time? Just to double check? We'll be back. Okay? Fair enough. Understandable.
We need another meeting date.
Mr. Cohen, do you have any witnesses for your component? No. I know you had a planner maybe in the rows. I thought he was on your, on your dole there, but okay, fair enough.
I'm comfortable with a real position. I'm trying to cooperate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cohen. All right, then we're going to pick up a date for you.
Right.
Get Mr. Keller in front of us. And Mr. Coakley, I can promise you I will attempt another special meeting for you. They're very difficult because getting the room, getting the witnesses, I'm sure you know, it's like herding sheep. But I give you my word, just like last time we spoke after the last meeting, your time is valuable, the board's time is valuable. I want to make sure that we get this done in a timely manner. I'm trying for you. Well, interesting enough, we happen to have the attorney for that case right here.
So, Mr. Coakley, we've, we've carried the 1,200 Route 22 land investors to September 9th. Is that?
That case will not be going. The municipality's passed the redevelopment plan for that property.
Can we pull that off of our docket?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like that date?
But I didn't hear the date.
September 9th?
September 9th.
I'm out of the country, I think.
Okay.
Then, we only have one meeting in September. This is a holiday, so. October?
28th is the next.
28th, yeah. 14th is full.
We have another case on that night, but if they shared the night.
Yeah.
The next available, fully available date, like completely clear night right now, is November 25th.
November 20?
25th.
25th.
Two days before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
We only have one November meeting because of election or Veterans Day, one of those.
Or it'd be October 28th and you'd get half a meeting. October 28th, are you available? Then what's the full date, November?
25th.
November 25th. When's Thanksgiving?
The 27th.
27th. 25th would work. 25th, Mr. Coakley?
I'm about to say I'm not available, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. I'm not out of the country as much as others.
That's good.
November 25th?
That's if it's carried.
Okay, so just for members of the public, this meeting is coming to a conclusion now. It will be carried to November 25th at 7:00 PM in this room and there will be no further notices from the applicant. So, again, November 25th at 7:00 PM in this room.
All right, and for the board, our next meeting is August 26, 7:00 PM, this room. We have a residential, two residentials that night?
Uh, one of them's not quite residential.
Okay, quasi-residential.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, thank you everyone on the board for your help tonight. Motion to adjourn.
I move.
All right, Mr. Wadeli?
Okay.
Mr. Bonjourno. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
We have a few meetings left, so.
They were wise.